Okay, good evening and welcome to the work session business meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back for people that have been away to our first meeting of the school year. I'm going to open it up first for public comments on agenda items. Is there anybody that wants to speak on an agenda item? Okay, then moving on to the treasurer's report for July is available in the district business office. And we're going to start with the consent agenda, number one, please.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through eighteen as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of minutes from the previous meeting, approval of additional work hours for various staff members, approving the twenty-three, twenty-four audit committee members, amending the twenty-three, twenty-four club advisor and stipends listing, we're amending the fall coaches listing, we're appointing Barbara Parmally as the voting delegate for the two thousand and twenty-three NISBA annual business meeting, we're appointing Barbara Parmally as the Westchester Putnam School Board Association advocacy liaison, we're appointing Gail Orifashay as the driver education clerical support person, we're appointing Eileen Bloom as the driver education in-class instructor, we're approving the final AS seven contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three BOSI services for prior school year, we're approving an unpaid leave request, we're amending the twenty-three, twenty-four substitute listing, we're approving the following donations and accepting them, we're donating to the touchdown club an unusable football helmet from the district athletic department. They're going to utilize that in a fundraiser. We're accepting a New York State Better Beginnings Award of a thousand dollars in honor of Megan Boyle, elementary school teacher, which will be utilized in the general fund. We're approving the acceptance of Mandarin textbooks from a high school teacher, Amy Lee Ludovici. We're appointing middle school and high school ex-student activities treasurers, Gail Orifashay will be in the high school and Karen McCarny in the middle school. We're amending the probationary term for a teacher appointment from four years to three years for Kathleen Westerfeld due to her previous tenure in another school district. We're authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into an agreement for the JCK Foundation, which oversaw some assemblies at the high school. We're amending the title and workday hours for Andrea Bain. She's going from school monitor to campus monitor, which increases her daily hours. And that's it.
I have a question.
Questions or comments? Any other questions or comments?
The driver said in-class instructor, is that paid by the student fees?
Yeah, so the student fees are based upon us the in-class instructor, a vast majority of the fees cover the road portion of the fees, but those together are collected and then dispersed out to two different individuals. The law doesn't permit the person responsible for the car to also teach the in-class portion. So there's two different people.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All of the resolutions pass. Okay, so we're moving into our presentations. The first one is by the superintendent, Dr. Luft.
Good evening, everyone. So I want to begin by covering a little bit of what was covered during our opening of schools celebration when we welcomed our faculty and staff back. First, I would like to recognize how beautiful our buildings and grounds are, and that's a huge kudos to our custodians, our ground staff, under the leadership of Dave Spittle as always. This building does not look like a building that's now twenty-three years old. We constantly get compliments from visitors, even other facilities directors come and check out some of our spaces. So huge kudos to them. I also want to acknowledge our clerical staff who is here throughout the summer preparing our buildings for the upcoming school year, our technology staff who works all summer updating, revising, and making sure we have the most cutting-edge technology available for our staff and students, and as well as our instructional staff who is here throughout the summer covering events like our kinder camp, our summer boost programs, our extended year program, and as well as revising curriculum and doing other work that will certainly make us continually better moving forward for the benefit of our students. I do want to recognize Ms. Carly Robey, who is our new elementary school assistant principal. Ms. Robey joined us over the summer. She's a Solmers native who has lived in Long Island for the last few years and has relocated with their family back here to this area just to accept the job here in Putnam Valley. So she's done an excellent job and we welcome her. A quick public service announcement. I know the PTA, the PTSA, and the Putnam Valley Education Foundation are all doing a membership drive. We've invited them to all of our opening of schools ceremonies. They've been provided opportunities to address both our parents and our staff. And for anyone out there listening, I hope you take advantage and look to partner with one of these many organizations. I know we have a new leadership of the PTA. PTSA is still looking for members, and the Education Foundation is really looking for new young leaders that are willing to take over the reins. I do want to extend a huge thank you to our transportation. This covers both our in-district and our contracted transportation services. This is certainly the smoothest opening of schools we have had regarding transportation. And a special thank you to the drivers that were impacted by last Friday's storm. We had a couple buses that were forced to turn around. We had trees down, wires down. So our drivers were able to effectively navigate these obstacles, safely get the children back to the elementary school and where many of our administrators, including Dr. Perdesta, Mrs. Robey, Jackie Levine, Michael Koenig, and am I forgetting anyone else?
You.
Oh, me. Me. Waited with the students until their parents came and picked them up. So thank you to our transportation. We implemented our first middle school, high school lockdown drill for the school year. It was a huge success. This was our first opportunity to really implement some of the changes we made following last year. Both buildings locked down simultaneously. I debriefed with Deputy Goodman earlier today. We had a great response from state troopers, Westchester County, the sheriff's department, as well as Carmel, police officer. So they came, they followed the protocols, and were able to effectively lift our lockdown drill. So a huge thank you to all those members of law enforcement took time out of their day to come here, learn a little bit about our protocols, learn a little bit about our buildings, and participate in our lockdown drills. I also want to recognize, as promised last school year, we welcomed a new school patrol officer to our middle school. So Mr. Paul Sillo is a retired police officer. He's a Putnam Valley native. He has kids in the Putnam Valley School District, and he will be a huge asset to our middle school. So now that leaves one uniformed officer in each of our buildings. And again, a promise following last year's swatting incident that we were looking to add a police presence in each of our buildings. So thank you to Paul Sillo and the other members of our safety teams. A quick rundown in our enrollment. Our total elementary school enrollment this year is five hundred and seventy-one students, so that's up from last school year. Middle school is four hundred and thirty-eight. That's slightly down, but they took in a really small class of eighty-five students. And our high school enrollment is at four hundred and ninety-nine, down just a couple of students from the previous year. I do want to also highlight that this is the highest enrollment we've had in many years of students attending the BOSI's technical program, and we have sixty-five juniors and seniors enrolled in the CTE program. So I know that's of interest to many of the board members, and I wanted to take this opportunity to share that with the larger community. Some of the events that occurred. We had our new staff orientation for three days. Thank you to Ms. Levine for organizing that and the many other administrators and teachers who participated. We had our admin and board retreats, our kinder camp welcomed some of our earliest kindergartners to the building, our high school summer boost program, we had our elementary school bus run, and our back-to-school evening for kindergarten. We had our elementary school back-to-school evenings for the other grades this week, superintendent's conference days, and JCK Foundation assemblies here at the high school talking about social emotional wellness. A quick look forward. Our middle school back-to-school nights are scheduled for September nineteenth and twentieth, the first being grades five and six, the second being grade seven and eight. The Putnam Valley Education Foundation has their color run, two P. M. on October first. High school has its back-to-school night, October fifth, at six P. M. We have our early dismissal drill on October sixth. The students will be dismissed fifteen minutes early. Middle school book fair, October seventeen to nineteen. High school financial aid night, October eighteen. High school listening hours, October twenty-fourth, and our elementary school kicks off, or actually, October twentieth is the kickoff of our first responder appreciation events with our high school football game, followed by October twenty-fifth is our elementary school first responder read, and the twenty-sixth is our first responder apparatus and equipment event here at the middle school. So I hope all of those, all of those interested take advantage, and I certainly welcome News Twelve to come cover that event. It'd be awesome. That's it. Thank you.
You know, it's a long list of things that have been going on, and you can see how busy they've been. But what's not, what Dr. Luft didn't say, is the faces of the people that participating in all of those things. So like the new staff orientation, to see all of those people who are so excited to be with our students and to take on whatever roles they had was, was just really great to see. I missed the opening of school, but Ms. Yetter was there. The teachers and everybody that came that day seemed excited and happy. And the faces of the children, you know, it's just, you, the opening of school is so exciting that all of the work that they did over the summer and all the preparation is really for that moment, for those moments, for the students. So I appreciate the work of all of our administrators, teachers, teacher aides, bus drivers, custodians. Dr. Luft talks about how beautiful this building is, and it's twenty years old. Think about the elementary school and how old that is, and it's gorgeous. So, and the middle school too, it's beautiful. So they've done an amazing job in every, in every respect, and we're just thrilled to be open and to have students back in all the buildings. I was talking to Carly Robey at the elementary school the other night, and she said, "It's just so good to walk the halls and have kids in them," because all summer she's been working and there have been no students. So that's, it's just really nice. Was the opening for teachers was good? You went to that?
Yeah, it was excellent. I mean, it was obviously a great turnout. Everyone is there, but at the same time, the speaker was great. He, I think he really hit home with a lot of the people, and his name's escaping right now, but.
Jonathan Costa.
Jonathan Costa. He did a great job. He.
Free announcement.
Yeah. He, I just loved how he used his own examples and to really relate in how the future's going to be and how people really need to think how we're going to reach out to the future for how we teach. It's not going to be all AI or Chat G. T. We really need to dive into it and utilize all the resources that we can. So he's very good.
Great. Great. You had a new beginning too, so it was good for you?
It was good, yes. A lot of new beginnings this fall, but all good things.
Good. Okay, the next presentation or report is on the second reading of the policy series, zero, 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 and one, zero, zero, zero. So I think we discussed at the last meeting that we were going to retire the current policies in those two sections. Once we approve the ones, hopefully this evening, they will just replace the ones that were there. So, and right, Mrs. Bellino said they can, they'll just be gone from the.
Yeah, they'll be deactivated.
From the website, and then the new ones will be up.
Right.
I would like to thank Mrs. Horvitz and Mr. O for their work on the policy committee. There's, it can be long and tedious to go through all of these policies. Also, I think Dr. Levine, I mean, Mrs. Levine, Dr. Doherty, and Dr. Luft also participated. And so hopefully this year we'll get, we'll see how far we get. I'm not even going to present, project.
When will the next set be prepared by our Lordy?
So yeah, we were informed by NISBA, the next series will be in our, on our portal for tomorrow. They said about the end of the day tomorrow. So I know.
Set a date up then.
Yeah, Maureen's setting up a date to get the policy committee back together, and we'll go on to the two thousand and three thousand series, and then we'll continue moving forward from there. Yeah. So I did want to highlight some of the changes from our first reading. The second reading, we updated some language after running some of the important policies by our attorneys. So we updated the language according to what our attorneys recommended, and we updated some of our public comment policies to align to our current practice or what has been our practice regarding public comment. So those are really the two main changes between the first and second reading.
Okay. New business. Number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Brianna Billington to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September one, two thousand and twenty-three, and terminating on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven in the teaching assistant ten-year area at the annual compensation of step three of the CSEA salary schedule. And in accordance with PBCSD policy ninety-two fifty, Ms. Billington holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? She's not here, right? Okay. Otherwise, you'd make her come up and speak. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jennifer Carfagno to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Shelby Grasso to a thirteen-week-long substitution position at the middle school effective August thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three through December fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education. At the substitute salary of a hundred and fifty dollars per day, Ms. Grasso holds early childhood B through two and childhood education one through six initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Denise Pellegrino to a probationary appointment of campus monitor effective September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the elementary school on step two of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Judy Moore to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September one, two thousand and twenty-three, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks till August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendations of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school monitor Judy Moore from the district effective September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, as per document number sixty twenty-four attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in.
I'll give way to the next one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Brandon Case to a probationary appointment as school monitor effective September fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school monitor Danielle, Danielle Maldonado from the district effective August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as per document number fifty-six dash twenty-four attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school monitor Michelle Moran from the district effective August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as per document fifty-seven slash twenty-four attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number ten, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Nina Bevelacqua from the school district effective September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as per document sixty-four twenty-four attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eleven, please.
Resolved to retire the series zero, 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 and series one thousand policies current, currently in effect for the district and approve the second reading of the policy series of zero, 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 document fifty-four slash twenty-four, and policy zeros one thousand as per document fifty-five over twenty-four attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Excellent. All those beginning-of-the-year things, huh? Ins and outs.
Important stuff.
Important stuff, I know. Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment on any topic. We do have some of an audience today, which we haven't had in a while, so welcome, and we're glad to see people here. So while the board has historically provided great leeway regarding time limits for public comment, in the event that the speaker is sharing hateful, hurtful, judgmental, inaccurate, or otherwise inappropriate comments, no extension of time will be allowed. The board wants to hear from the community. We want to hear specifically about your child and your child's experiences in our school. So saying that, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Dr. Luft, did you want to say something first?
Yeah, it was my intention to. I was going to read part of the letter that went out to the community, but I was honestly expecting a much larger audience. So I'm going to assume that those that are here have read the letter, but it really clearly states that it's certainly, it's not the district's position, and it's certainly not my personal position to find anything offensive about the thin blue line flag in question. But this is really a conversation about the appropriateness of painting such a flag on public property belonging to every taxpayer in the community, and the reality that while I may not find it offensive, there is great likelihood that someone in our community could find that image offensive. And there are many other pro-police ways in which we can celebrate the police officers who live and work in this town with, by painting other objects on spots. So I'll spare everyone the time of rereading the message, and we can go right to public comment. Thanks.
Please, if you would like to comment, come to the microphone, introduce yourself, tell us your name so that we can reference that, please.
Is it off? Nope. Very good. Good evening. Oh, my name is Miranda Zaki. I have a first grader now and a ninth grader. Good evening, Dr. Luft, administration, and our Board of Education. If the true ways of the world are now to divide and conquer, then that is what we must do. In the high school, we have an A and B team. Maybe what we need to do is restructure this A and B team. For all three schools, we need to have an A-team curriculum and a B-team curriculum incorporating the renaming. As your words have hit effectively, it is so time for the division. Let's do some true scientific method here. The problem, the question, what are you allowing Albany to dictate to you by funding, which in turn is selling our children's need for true education? Research, Common Core, D E I, B C E teachings. The hypothesis, we can't, quote unquote, "We can't make everyone happy," Dr. Luft, stated Dr. Luft. Can we, if an A-team goes back to true basics, reading, writing, arithmetic, true American history, a language of choice, true amazing science? And the goal is to make everyone happy and for parents to sleep at night knowing their children are being educated appropriately and not in the dictatorship of the world of Common Core, D E I, but true to similarities, to maintain a form of trust and faith in our public education system with a choice for our own morals, values, and beliefs, the American way. When Krista called me related to our student whose dream to become a police officer, my first response was, "Oh, wow, they are believing in proper flag etiquette." That positive thought went down the drain by your responses. You didn't educate proper flag etiquette and finds a common grounds. You didn't find a way for this student you dictated. Dreams crushed. You make it political. Children wanting to pursue a positive profession and serve American people should never be discouraged or put down by any adult, including but not limited to yourself. I assume the nursing healthcare emblem would have been accepted? Shouldn't every profession be accepted? What about the American flag standing at the head of this parking spot and a blue line painted across this parking spot? A police officer badge painted? What's political about that? Police are not a political battle. They are true American professionals that serve our country and are needed now more than ever. I cannot wait to see this amazing kid go all the way to the apex of our police force. I will stand beside him. You have excluded his dream. You have excluded his profession. And all you can think to do is take away an exciting privilege our students look forward to their entire high school years, driving, painting their own parking spot through expression. ACAB was sick, destructive, demoralizing, cruel, mean, hateful, political battle, not what this kid wanted to do. Don't you want children to understand the non-bullying policy? Setting examples through actions, not just words, are vitally important. We had a meeting with a bunch of, I think it was about twenty-eight community members, and one of the members made a statement, and I wrote it down. I want to read it. There has developed in our society a small group of people who want to destroy any and all symbols that tie us to the past. The blue line flag issue is one more in this long line of symbols that the destroyers of free speech are targeting. If one or two people object to something, then the overwhelming majority have to stand and watch their symbol removed. And so we find the tail wagging the dog, as it were. This type of action only breeds deep levels of frustration on the part of many and the radicalization of a few who feel they are not being heard. I have four questions from the community. The community, number one, the community is asking for justification of your new contract of over a half a million dollars. Number two, why was your contract rushed by our Board of Education in May, finalized in August, when it did not expire for over a year to come? Number three, we as a community should not have to foil search, research, and have to take time and effort to find information that should be one hundred percent transparent. Because of this time effort it takes to seek this information and understand it, trust is lost. Trust is lost more and more. Any way for you to simplify, use latent terms for school information? Number four, if we do not show and teach our children to honor and respect all true professions, including but not limited to law enforcement, our military, firemen, doctors, nurses, teachers, subtracting one profession can only lead us to eventually subtracting all others. When do we draw the line and say two words of "N-" When do we draw the line and say two words of no and stop? True citizens will not allow America to fall. True American history. Happy Constitution Day on Sunday. What we need is our public schools, in our public school system, is a true student, parent, taxpayer advocate, a true professional to balance it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda.
So I would just encourage yourself and anybody else who wants to see all we do to recognize the police officers, the firefighters, the military, the medical personnel, everybody who lives and serves in this community, to compare what we do to any other school district in the region, what we've done for many years in terms of honoring all of these individuals, or have a conversation with any one of these individuals who live in this community, who work in this building or who visit this building. Because I could assure you that every law enforcement officer who lives and works here feels supported and appreciated by myself, Board of Education and everybody in this district. I could not be more proud of what we do to recognize the members of law enforcement. I have conversations with them every day. So I'm sorry that that one symbol and some of the symbols you named were actually approved, including a police shield was approved to be painted in the parking lot. So there are many other ways in which the student in question could have recognized the police officer, so that fact that he wants to become a police officer. And I've had conversations with both of his parents and himself regarding it. So it's, it's not about him and it's not about the symbol. I mean, it's not about him, it's about the public's reaction to that symbol. So I don't want to make it about that one student. That was it. Thank you.
I didn't make it about that one student. I think this is more on an everyday basis, a consistency and transparency to the community. I think there's a lot of factors in here. You can re-watch it and you can understand my words a little more later on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Krista Straub. You know, taking a step back with the ACAB spot, I guess that started this whole situation. When it first came out and for the record, it was not my picture, I wasn't here, so I did not put that picture out.
Krista, can you speak a little bit louder or right?
Is it right in there? You hear me?
Ah, there you go. That's good, thank you.
I actually probably would have never put that picture out because you took care of the situation right away. I wouldn't have done that, so I just want to be clear about that. And I wasn't mad at the school, you know? I was mad that there was maybe one person that felt that way, that there's some kind of extreme view of the police force and I was sad about it. But that one thing kind of became, you kind of became the judge and jury of what students should be able to express. You know, the community wasn't asked, like, how can we stop that from happening? Or, you know, I don't know if there's like a set guideline, what's allowed, what's disallowed. This way beforehand, they're not denied individually for a specific thing. And I'm talking about all, you know, not red, blue, you know, whatever, pride flag, all that. I don't understand, you know, why we, they all had to suffer for that one spot. You know, we teach love and acceptance here. This is Putnam Valley. I feel kind of insulted that you didn't trust our community to handle this kind of thing, you know? I would never deny a child to be able, to be able to express themselves. I have a problem with teachers putting out extremist ideas, you know? I, I teach my children to respect the law. I teach them to respect authority. When they come here, they respect you because my punishment would be worse than yours. I guarantee you if my kid ever drew anything disrespectful in this parking lot to their school, my punishment would be worse. He wouldn't have a car. So I felt insulted that we weren't included. It went to maybe one, I don't know who reviews, if it's one or two, but, you know, you can't make everybody happy, you know? And I've learned that like day one in leadership training. If you try to make everybody happy, you make nobody happy because it's impossible. And whoever these one or two people were, they were set up for failure. You know, you reviewing arts, you know, I mean, the way students express themselves in art can be maybe not, I get a different idea than someone else does and we should be able to accept those differences, you know? And I just want to, I feel like, you know, you're mad at me for bringing this out, but you shouldn't be mad at me. I didn't bring politics into this school. Albany did. We're just here trying to keep our community united, you know? I can love and accept anybody. It's humanity. I'm a humanitarian first. I teach my, my parents that work with me to wear the white hat. What if it was your child? You know, step out and put yourself into that parent's shoes. And that's what I'm trying to do here. And I felt, we felt just excluded from the whole process, you know? And, you know, as far as Albany and you, I don't think you're anti-law enforcement. I don't think that at all. I think bureaucracy kills communication, you know? And sometimes conflict creates change where we can all just accept whatever we want to be, a cop, if you're gay, if you're trans, whatever, you know? And I feel that's being suppressed on our students that they have to worry, oh, I don't want to do that, it's going to offend someone. I don't want to teach that to them, you know? So I thank you for listening. I'm sorry if I caused trouble for you, but it needs to be said, you know, and talked about. We need to talk about these things or we won't move forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming up and speaking and certainly, no, you didn't cause any trouble for me. I like what you said about bringing a community together or uniting a community because that was exactly what our intention was. As the administrators, we viewed the designs for the parking spaces. We looked at them through the lens of, will this be deemed controversial by some? Certainly not all. And if the answer to that question was yes, then we simply ask the students to revise. And I do think the students deserve a great deal of credit because if they're asked to revise their design, they do it immediately, they submit a new design and they move on. So this is certainly not something that's being driven by students. So that was the lens in which we've looked at it. While you may not have pointed out other designs over the past few years, Mr. Mello and myself could attest to the fact, many others have. So this is not the first time we've heard from adults regarding their disapproval of signs that are in the parking lot. So our goal has been for the last couple of years to remove the controversy, to get back to the roots of what was students having an opportunity to celebrate their time spent in high school with uniforms or instruments or a scene from a play or a scene from their favorite movie, lyrics from a song. For 20 years, these parking spots went largely unnoticed and it's a little sad that we've now reached a point where we're actually having conversations regarding whether or not this is something that we can continue. The amount of time and energy that's now invested into not just reviewing the designs, but then responding to the emails, the phone calls, the meetings that precipitate disapproval of the district decisions regarding the designs is what really leads us to where we are this evening. So nobody wants us to stay more than I do. I really believe this is a time-honored tradition, but educators can't spend hour upon hour discussing and arguing parking lot designs with adults. And that's unfortunately where we have ended in the past couple of years. So I remain hopeful that this is something that we'll be able to keep. We will continue to view all parking lot designs through the lens of, of it not being controversial, encouraging kids to find ways and symbols that are not controversial and we'll see where it goes. But if, to be honest, if we continue to have to dedicate large majorities of board meetings to this discussion, then at some point, it's simply not worth the time we invest because we're taking time away from education, we're taking time away from students, we're taking time away from social, emotional well-being, we're taking time away from the things that really matter, why all of us are here. So I'm hopeful we can continue.
Okay, anybody else like to comment? I'm only waiting because I want to be sure that, you know, if people have something that they really want to say, that they feel that they have a voice. This board and past boards have never wanted or tried to silence our community from speaking what their truth.
My name is Nicole Burglass and I would like to address the parking lot issue.
Could you speak?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay. You can hold it in your hand.
I don't want to. So my son is a vet. He's disabled from his deployment and I am a firm believer of our government and certainly absolutely of our flag. My son was almost murdered in deployment and I'm very grateful to the government. I, I believe in the police. We all need the police from time to time. To me, the blue flag is a representation of the flag. It's not the flag, but it's a representation. My problem with this parking spot is that I don't want to see a car driving even on a representation of the flag. To me, there are other ways of representing and respecting and honoring the police. This to me is not one of them. So I'm happy, glad to hear that this has been resolved and that the student is willing to do something else. If people look at the code of how the flag is supposed to be treated, that is certainly not one of the ways. There are very explicit guidelines, which I did post on that. And this, as a, as a representation of the flag, does not follow that. So thank you for addressing it with a student and I'm really glad that he and his parents were immuneable to the change.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank your son for his service.
Anybody else? Okay, then we will leave the public comments and talk about topics and presentations for upcoming meetings.
So our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 28th. We'll have our external auditors report. That'll be followed by the opening of schools report for our elementary school. And then the following meetings, Thursday, October 12th, middle school opening of schools report, including a middle years program update and our athletics report. Tuesday, high school opening of schools, Tuesday, October 24th, high school opening of schools report, and then Thursday, November 16th, buildings and grounds update. We do have some other reports that we're looking to squeeze in there, including a data report, but we're not entirely sure with the timing when the state will release the data we need. So we'll certainly add some others, but those are coming up for sure.
Board member comments on any topic?
Yeah, I just have two observations. The previous speakers, I do have to agree that Albany has, over the years, pushed their weight around on all our school districts. It's something that I never was comfortable with, being in the education system for 35 years. Their main mandates have bankrupted or literally caused the bankruptcy of some small districts upstate New York to where they had to consolidate because one mandate after another, always unfunded, always thought about by legislators who don't know education at all, passing stuff that half of it is nonsense. So I do agree Albany is to blame for much of the malaise that we see in education today. Secondly, parking spaces, I was on the activities committee when this was formed in 2000. I sat with the then-principal and many parents and we talked about what activities would be really great for the new high school. And the parking spaces were that. And they were set up to be whimsical, funny, nostalgic, something that the senior would have a year-long testament describing his or her relationship with the high school, a band instrument perhaps, or some words out of a musical, or perhaps a tech center, you know, the work that they're doing at tech center, or just a funny thing like a Charlie Brown cartoon, which I've seen Snoopy on his doghouse. That's what it was about. It was never meant to be public comment or commentary. My God, I, I mean, the people in the community know I support our police to such an extent that I was ostracized by supporting our own police department years ago. And, you know, seeing our Putnam Valley police disbanded broke my heart. But the bottom line is there are individuals that don't have those feelings that I have or some of us have, that may have had a bad situation with law enforcement. And they're taxpayers and they're community residents as well. So let's keep it what the activities committee back in 2000 set out to do, which is to make a fun, whimsical, nostalgic type of representation for the seniors. And I think the review process has to continue. It has to be thorough. It has to be so focused to make sure that nothing of controversy is there in that parking lot, other than the students' appreciation of their four years here at this institution. That's what it's about. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments. I feel compelled to do so because my husband is a police officer and therefore I obviously support the police 100% and I get to see on the front lines every day the sacrifice that they make, knowing that there is always the possibility that they may not come home. That being said, I first of all want to commend that student for choosing to be a police officer because it is not easy to be a police officer in the times in which we live. I am very content with the fact that the district found a way for that student to be able to represent his beliefs without necessarily having to use that particular symbol. Symbols matter. And unfortunately, what I think is the bigger issue here is a societal one where the blue line flag has now become something to some people that it was never meant to be. And I think that's the bigger issue. It's not necessarily the fact that the, the blue line flag is completely and totally inappropriate for which it stood for the student. And I think that's the piece we have to focus on. I do agree that the flag must be treated with great respect and I want to thank you for your son's service on behalf of the board. But that being said, I think we also have to teach our students about empathy and making sure that they're seeing things in the eyes of those who believe differently than they do. And while I 100% support the police and our district does as well, and I think Dr. Lef has made that very clear in the letter that he sent and in the things that we do, the actions that we do here in this district to celebrate our first responders in ways that other districts don't do, I think that having found a different symbol to represent that desire and that belief system of that student was a wonderful solution to really this societal issue that we're having right now. So thank you so much for making the effort to make that student feel accepted and able to, to share his, his future and his viewpoints of what he wants to do as a student, which I think is a wonderful way to use that parking spot to say, this is what I want to be, at the same time as being respectful of those who are in the school who may have a particular viewpoint on that particular symbol. So thank you so very much.
And I, I would just like to mention that this is not the only... And I, I would just like to mention that this is not the only student that was asked to rethink their plan. There were other student, I'm sorry, do you know of that this, you think this was the only student?
No.
Oh, okay.
They're a hate sensor.
So, but each of the students whose original design, um, was questioned, um, was discussed, personally reached out and talked to the student about what were, what were you trying to do, what, what, what's important to you? So, there were, I mean, I don't even know and don't need to know how many there were and what their symbols were. But I do know that our staff reaches out to students, trying to respect their thoughts and feelings, their goals and ambitions, and work it in to a school that has hundreds of students. So, it's not, it's not just personal rights, it's family rights, group rights, the rights of the community, um, all interwoven, and how to find a peaceful, um, way of demonstrating that. Um, and I think that our staff does a really good job of reaching out. I do not think that we, um, I'm trying to think, are a dictatorship. Not at the elementary school, not at the middle school, not at the high school. I disagree that Albany has totally messed us up.
I didn't say totally. I said many times they do.
Okay, but, but.
Barbara, and they do. They're a bunch of knuckleheads up there, the legislators passing stuff.
You and I don't, I know, you and I don't happen to agree on that point. Um, and I, I think it's really hard when you're directing a whole state to make decisions that work always perfectly for everybody. It, I, I can't do it in a family of four, so I can't even begin to imagine. But I think we work really hard at giving kids voice, at being respectful of our students, their learning, their learning styles, and I would hate for this to be, um, seen as negative and, and, um, just, and that we discourage and put down our students for their thoughts and ideas. I, I, I just, I can't. I, I have to say that that's just not in fact true. It's not.
Barbara, I have a few things to add to that. You know, we send our children to school, we entrust them with faculty, staff members, and I've, I've found a few comments made by the public semi-offensive. I don't believe the teachers are trying to indoctrinate extremist ideas, and I think it's unfortunate if the public feels that way. But we have to entrust the people that are in front of our children. We want them to teach them how to be open-minded and question things and get along with people who are vastly different from them. Because when they go out into the real world, they're going to encounter people that don't think and feel like them. And everybody sitting here has had a boss that they could probably not stand and wonder how that person got to be a boss, and, but yet we have to respect them and listen to them. There's a policy in place when something is handed, you know, to, what is my parking spot going to look like? It's a privilege. It's not, you know, it's not a granted that you're going to get that space and that your design isn't going to be, you know, approved, but we have to keep in mind that if we are doing something that's offensive to somebody else, take a step back and reevaluate how that other per, put yourself in somebody else's shoes, which we don't do enough of. We're living in a society that everybody has a complaint about something, and who are you going to offend? And teachers in this building are not out to offend anybody. And I think we really need to take a step back and look at what is important to us. Our kids here get a great education. They really do. And unless you have been in other places to compare it to, open your eyes, go, go visit classrooms, ask Dr. Luft, can I go to a social studies class? Can I go to a math class? Whatever it may be, if you're concerned about it, call the principal. That's why they're here. But we have to stop deevaluating concerns that everybody has. People just want to feel accepted and cared for and safe when they come to school, in addition to learning the reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I don't feel that Albany is so off-base, other than the fact it's a lot of folks up there that haven't been in a classroom in many, many years. They're writing books, they're writing papers, but try teaching the people in front of you. So, we have an agreement, disagreement there. But I found it really offensive, some of the comments that were being made, like over the last few days, that we don't support law enforcement, nothing could be further from the truth. And I wish that people would not put words in our mouths and support more of what we do. Because I said at our board retreat, you have four Medicare recipients here. Where is the rest of the community that wants to complain about everything but doesn't want to get involved in their child's education? That's all I have to say.
First, I'm commercial still.
So, only three, only three of us.
But along with that, and I, I think my colleagues bring up great points, and I'm just looking forward this year, my hope is that we get back to education because we've had a lot of challenging topics over the last few years. And they have taken education, although it's always our center, but the topics have taken our focus off education and being able to speak to it here at the board. We would love to get back to education, and that's what our, our hope is. That's why we're sitting here, for our children, for our students, and our faculty and staff, and everyone that's involved in, um, bringing these kids to as successful as they can be. Um, along with that, I just want to point out, there was an email that came out this afternoon, um, from the high school regarding the building steering committee. And it's asking for parent volunteers, and I encourage everyone who, um, who, to look at this email, they're looking for five or six, um, representatives from parents to collaborate with the school administration, students, teachers, and staff to provide input about the parent perspective on education. And, um, I encourage everyone to look at that. If you're interested in participating, please, there's an email, um, it's not everyone can attend, it's only, you know, it's only up to five to six people. But if you have an interest, please, I encourage you to reach out to the school on this matter. It came out in the email today, and I believe there's, uh, building steering for each of the schools. Maybe not this many parent committees, but for each of the schools, and encourage parents to be involved.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Podesta also sent out the one for the elementary school this week as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to open up for public comments? Okay.
My name is Vicky Missola, and, uh, my son came back after two years of not being in Putnam Valley School, and now he's back.
Speaking to the.
Now, he's back.
Well, welcome.
As a junior. So, you know, I came here tonight and I wasn't happy about the blue line flag not being, uh, accepted. But then, I came here open-mindedly and I listened to what Nicole had to say. And you know what? I really have a respect for what she said, and it is true that a flag shouldn't be.
On the ground.
On the ground.
Disrespected or whatever. So, you know, I just wanted to say that. And also, Sam, you brought up good points about what the parking spot should be. So, I think that these are the guidelines that should be put out there to the students and to follow them as something that's supposed to be happy and, you know, you know, I can't disagree with that. You know, I, I can't. So, you know, that's what I wanted to say because I think you do have to have an open mind, that you cannot make everybody happy. And yeah, it, I saw things that were offensive on those spots when I dropped my son off, but you know what? They approved them and that's it, you know, what are you going to do? But you can't make everybody happy, that's the bottom line. And I hope going forward that these kids could put, you know, paint their spots because it is something they look forward to. And that's all I have to say, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Nothing to do with the parking spot, your Albany or anything like that. I just want to compliment the district on, uh, the, the tech center enrollment. It, I was very impressed by that and, and the array of trades that our, our kids are going into. People, I think, are really beginning to understand that for a child who's not intent on going to college, that the trades provide a, a great living and a great, great opportunity to succeed here in, in our economy. I had the plumber over my house again, and man, every time they walk through the door, I start to shake because you know that just walking through that door, there's like a hundred dollars there, and then we got to replace this gizmo that controls your water, uh, temperature and everything. And it, it's a great, great business if a child, you know, a young person, um, young lady, young man gets involved in that. So, very happy to see those numbers. They were excellent.
He's happy. This is good.
I like saying happy.
Um, the only other thing, well, two things. The school law guide, Maureen orders one, and it's in the district office. If, if anybody is desperate to find a way to fall asleep at night, wants to take it to read, um, they're expensive and, and it's pretty much the same every year, but there is one in the district office. Helen offered to serve on the resolutions committee. So, she and I are going to go through the, so I printed out for you the NISBA, mostly because I work better with paper and pencil and writing them down. These are the resolutions worksheets of, but we're just not going to do 56 resolutions here. Helen and I will go through them, but if you, in going through them, see ones that you think we definitely should support, or definitely not support, or you have questions or concerns, if you reach out to me, um, I'll bring that up, and then we'll only bring the ones to the board that were concerned or high interest. Um, I also gave you, somebody broke it down into the resolutions by topic, so mandates and tax, um, the tax cat, timing, additional services, school safety. So, they're broken down, if you wanted to look at them in groups of topics rather than just free. And then Maureen printed out your resolution booklet so that.
Right.
Because it's, I know Dr. Luft is going to do it online, but it's easier for me to have paper in front of me.
I can tell you right now that, uh, I'm good with almost every single one of them except number 13. Take a look at 13. And we're coming back to what I disagreed with last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Fair enough. Now he's curious, going to look. Okay. Any other comments? Jackie, thank you for all the work you did with teachers this summer. I think that was, I love lis, looking at your blurbs of all the things that teachers are doing. I think it's amazing. I think we have great staff. Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn our work session business meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Come back to another meeting.
Yes.
We like having you here.